Like I said, I just, I have it on a flash drive. And this is a faster way to, if you want to give me the flash drive, I can. Yeah, I can make that happen. Although, can I tell you when to change this slide?
Yeah, yeah.
What? Yeah, I think so. And I'm having. If it now, it's easy enough for me to do it. So for everybody on the phone, we're just, we had an executive session earlier this evening. We're just getting a couple of logistics things sorted out and we'll kick off our regular business.
Land detail.
Okay.
I have a point.
Share, because my. The landing trap? Yeah. I got it. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. We're all good. Are we good with getting started?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So as I mentioned before, we already held an executive session. We've, we have the motions in and out, Barbara. I wrote those down if you need them later. And we're into approving minutes.
Madam Chair, I'll move to. Accept the minutes of the Board of Assessors on September 13th, 2022. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Motion passes by zero. Up next, we have a reconsideration of our motion from the 13th. The minutes that we just addressed regarding the sale of 22 Belmont Road. So we said a minor error where the wrong address was listed for this town property. 22 Bell, 22 Belmont Road. The situation is that the document read 22 Belmont Road, which is the actual address of the butter, of the butter who wants to purchase 40 Belmont Road. So the. Motion needs to be, we need to offer up a new motion.
So was that, when we approved that, was it unanimous?
Yeah.
Yes. The person used to be in the jury to offer a motion to reconsider. So with that, I'll motion to reconsider the vote taken on 9/13 to sell 22 Belmont Road. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Did we address everything that we needed to for you guys?
And then you motion in 40.
Yes.
We need to separate motion.
I'll make that one.
Got it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes by zero.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the sale of the property at 40 Belmont Road, map four lot 27B.
Thank you. In a second.
One second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Although.
Just let the record show this correcting the, the error on 9/13.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes by zero. Thank you all for helping us with those motions. Next, we have minutes from our council meeting until September 13th.
I'm sure I have one correction.
Yeah.
Greg, there is just one G at the end. It's spelled in two places.
Okay, unfinished goes number two and.
And also council or comments number four.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion or edits that we have for these minutes?
Madam Chair, I would motion to accept the minutes of September 13th, 2022 as a amendment. Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes by zero. Signing of the treasurer's warrants.
Madam Chair, I move, we sign the treasurer's warrant in the amount of $309,276.31. Since dated 9/22/2022.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signing treasurer's warrants, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes by zero. We're now at the Great Works Regional Interest. Do you have everyone here?
No.
No? Okay, we can. If I could, without objection, if we could make a motion to. Jump ahead to the town manager's report at this point. What do we think?
Yeah. Madam Chair, I move that we.
Say public comment.
Public comment.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. Any, anyone here that wants to speak out anything? Not on our agenda later on?
Are we? Are we going to not revisit this again for people showing up at 6:30 at a meeting or?
No, meeting was posted at 6:00.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'll ask again. Anyone here from the public that wants to speak out anything not on our agenda later on? And this also goes for anyone on the phone. Okay. All right. So then, without objection, I'll take a motion to move the town manager's report up.
I move to. Delay reports and presentations until after the town manager's report. So we would have. Where is the town manager?
Under your business.
Okay. So moving the town manager's report up to. Right now.
Ahead of unfinished.
Thankfully seconded.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I, can I, I'm not sure.
Motion passes by zero. Just for context for the public, we have a presentation this evening with the Great Works Regional Land Trust. We're just waiting on a few folks to join us. We're a little ahead of schedule. So we want to make sure everybody's here. So Tim and Jen, what's up?
Town manager's report posted for September 27th, 2022. The highway department sprinkler system, the water main has been installed within public work building. They've been cleaning out storm drains. They've installed two new traffic speed signs. The electronic speed signs.
They look great, by the way.
Yeah.
They really, really look good.
One on Paulon Street and one by the bridge coming into town from Rawlingsford. Where on Main Street, I've already heard comments that they seem to be effective and they're working. Shoals on Belmont Road will be completed on Thursday. The beginning to install seven new drainage basins on Front Street. The striping on Belmont Road and Lucas Sand Road will be complete by the end of October for a total cost of $2,100. Police Department, the last two weeks has had seven arrests, nine accidents, 93 traffic stops, of which 36 were on Paulon Street. They'll be interviewing three candidates for the 11th final opening. We have one for the police department. Detective Sergeant Stevens will be holding a fraud training at the community center for the seniors this week. We've actually had some recent scams in towns, some big ones. At the department head meeting, Lieutenant Updike took the time out to acknowledge how well the public works, fire and police. Working together, especially at vehicle accidents. Serious action down here on Main Street last weekend. We worked together to rescue the patrons and get them to the hospital. The Gumpwood PD reached out to police, have a police station tour. They're in the process of building a new police station. I'm looking at our facility here. Fire Department's been extremely busy. 18 calls the last two weeks, 300 calls here to date. They're conducting, conducting interviews for the final new lieutenant position. They've had five internal applicants and should have a decision by Friday. Lieutenant Leach has been preparing for the annual fire prevention week. They'll be hosting students from Central School and conducting fire drills at schools and visiting private school and day kids next week. Code enforcement the last two weeks has had seven building permits, reforming permits, 29 inspections and three FOAA requests. They've been busy. Planning, planner reports that the final revision of revision six of the sole ordinance is done. The definitions have been finalized and they're now sending that on to the council for your final review. They'll be waiting for a third type of review votes for a project of 406 Main Street that they're requesting to send that way. And Amazoning the Board of Appeals has been scheduled to be on October 4th regarding a timber harvest complaint. They have done site plan review of land ordinance. Under, which is under review with the Economic Developer and working on that. Library, August brought 2,760 people library with 2,358 items borrowed. Simply made. Maureen has started the Dungeons and Dragons program for the kids, not for the staff. That's going well so that, so far, and October is looking to be a busy month with library. Under Recreation, the new program, 1A, just started last week. She's working on informative sessions, senior luncheons, yoga and music programs are going well. Auto House Hill President and Nikki have been working together on a proposal to bring the skate team and boosters to offer the hill for ski practice on Mondays. Second week of soccer games, there's been lots of kids along with lots of traffic by the fields. And Nikki wanted to make sure that she gave a shout out to the police department who have been patrolling there on the weekends when the game's going on and pulling old people for speeding in that area. So they're making a presence there. We're getting ready for breakfast with Santa. Of course, apparently it was two years off because of COVID. And the former town manager is going to come back and play Santa once again this year. Nothing for me.
Next year.
Nope. Jack's up next.
Tim, that was part of like the job description only hired.
Damn, I messed up on that. I was so hoping to get the glasses and everything. 30 seniors just come back from the American Music City of Nashville. In their Memphis trip, they had a good time. They did not, I repeat, they did not meet Elvis. On October 3rd, the senior is going to go on a, a late one of Psaki foliage cruise. Assessing. We've received over 170 property tax stabilization program opportunities. And they continue to grow. We have so many to get somebody to get that. The more we get, the busier we get with trying to process them and get that done. So here's something that came up on the manager's list or along through the assessor that I want you to think this through for a second. What a great program this is, right? Property stabilization. So a senior can apply to freeze their taxes at what will be now a 22 rate. That works out great. There's nothing in the law. So then the senior goes out in '23, builds a two-car garage with a new armpit. Increases their property values significantly, then applies for the property stabilization in '23, '24. Does it get maintained at the 22 rate and we lose all that income and new tax base? Nobody clarified that yet. That's up at the Attorney General's office waiting for, or at least somewhere in the legislature, waiting for some kind of legal guidance. So you see the problem that's been, again, mandated out of the dust though, without first thinking this through. Because if we end up at 300 people with this property, that with property stabilization, and 150 of them redevelop their properties and doesn't increase their taxes. That's a huge burden on the rest of the taxpayers in the community that now have to pick up that compensation. So just something to be aware of when we talk about tax stabilization program. Jack, you have a comment?
I agree.
Just saying, it's very frustrating for us to sit in the chair, try to make sense of this. Assessing, analyzing new sale figures to see where the property values are. She's been reporting on tree growth to the state and getting caught up on D name changes now that we process the tax filings. Town clerk, she has so far had 400 absentee requests received already and still getting more, correct Barbara?
Oh yeah, I probably got 50 in the last two days.
There you go. And 40 new voters through the automatic voter registration system. Madam Clark, could you brief the council on what the automatic voter registration system is, please?
I think I mentioned this at a prior meeting. Basically, if anyone does anything at motor vehicles with their driver's license, they're offered the chance to go through and register to vote while they're there. And then electronically, we get all the documents and make the final decision, which is a little bit frustrating the way it's working right now. But they're refining it and I think in the long run, it's a good thing. It will save a lot on election day. People will already be registered.
So what we still have, is there still a place, like will people still register? Have the ability to register about on election day, like before, we're expecting a volume to.
Yeah, that's not going away.
Thank you, Madam. Transfer station. The new sign has been put up, state tourism dumping, only no commercial dumping. Dan, transfer station reports is they end up having a great success. And to provide that information, we're filling and removing seven canisters a week through most of the summer. Now with that sign up, it's down to two or three canisters a week. So that's a, begin to be a huge saving. They seem very two cars men with out of state plates. The new bags, pay as you throw. Withdraw strings have been ordered. The reason we went to the drawstrings, those people don't like them. The vendor, the machine broke down to make the bags we currently have with the four ties on the side. They can't get the new pot, so the drawstring bags, all we can get at this time. And we'll be having a meeting, I'll be having public works director and a dump, the transfer station supervisor will be coming to the council discussing the dumb stickers and that process going forward. Getting your guys' decision on that. Do finance?
We have lots and lots of property tax payments coming in, which is great, keeping Barbara's office busy and finance girls busy. Peter Hall, our auditor, was here all last week. He kept me and my staff very busy. Piles and piles of paperwork he looked through and everything's looking good. He still has more to review offsite and he will be coming in December as he usually does to report to the council. And John, I have an answer to your question from last week regarding the red barn.
Am I buying ice cream?
Yes, you are.
Remember John bought the red barn available for.
For recreation. But it is restricted to recreational use only, per the deed.
Okay, I gotta go across, make a left turn out of Duncan Village.
So now you have your directions on your list. So then do economic development.
Denise has met with all the different department heads and working with them to see how she can use TIF funds to help with their programs. She also met with Sevago Tech next last week to get caught up on the traffic study and see how she can help with that. And it does look like we need to add Norton Street to the scope of work. We had talked about that last meeting. So we're going to add that to the scope. And then we're also going to be going forward with the Pumpkin Town TIF and working on updating that and shortly working on a TIF for the downtown district as well, which would be called the Economic Development TIF.
So sorry, you're talking about like amending the Pumpkin Town TIF. Yes.
Yep. And adding a new one for the downtown. Thank you.
The admin, we've been working, obviously, we've been working on the town hall project. Revised the website is moving forward with website mitigation. We're now in step five of eight. Step should be completed in about two weeks. Step six will be the quality assurance program. Step seven will be training and beta site review. Step eight will go live. So we're hoping for some great, better success. Denise, the economic developer has joined the complain committee. So I think you guys had her there last night and she's got a vast amount of knowledge. She did that both Yama and Sacco. So she's certainly a resource to utilize. I met with, I had a meeting with the fire chief and York Ambulance has hired a consultation group to do a study of York Ambulance and myself and the chief met with them last week. Subsequently, and I have no. I have nothing I can relate to this other than the fact that I've been notified that York Ambulance, the director has resigned. So they'll be waiting to see, to fill that spot. That doesn't affect our service. Our service is still intact and we're working, doing fine. Myself and Jen attended the monthly superintendent school board meeting. We're amongst all the discussion topics. We discussed the funding school formula, the budget and time. I got a clearer picture on that. So one of the things, I've never heard of this, but better clarification. So the school and most other places, all the other towns I've ever worked in, they give, the school gives you an assess, or they give you a target number for a budget. They'll say, we anticipate our budget going up 1.9%, 2.0%, whatever that number is. That's the budget I input into the, the crystal ball, so to speak, of the budget. So that we can have a fictitious number to move forward to get to our town meeting. The piece that was left out is, there's another step in that process. They then take that total amount, that 2.2%, 3%, whatever it is, on their total $40 million or $43 million budget. Then they take it and based on student population and.
Valuation of each town.
Valuation of each town, they subdivide that again and then they, they give you that portion. Not knowing that our portion went way up this year without us, them giving us.
Elliott South Hurway.
Right. Without them giving us the rest of the formula. So there is that was where the fault lies. I had no idea that that's was split. When they called and said, here's a number, they should have said, here's a number, but understand it's going to be subdivided. And we know that this year and we'll be more cognitively aware of that. I don't think that lessened the pain any, but that's, that's what occurred this year. So that you understand that's how it happened. We'll watch for it next year.
So we got the overall number, but the town breakout was a little bit unbacked, like the Elliott South Hurway.
Right. They didn't readjust that until after. They didn't readjust that. They didn't, they didn't give us that breakdown till well after we had met and approved our budget. So we didn't have any, you know, until they almost voted it. This year, we're hoping to have, we've opened communication with them. You were in a meeting. You know, we've opened communication with them early. We're hoping to have a better working relationship with them going forward.
I can interrupt. Was there any discussion with the schools about the joining, rejoining on the fuel?
Yes, and we've done that. They, they, we, so they, you did that today, right, from Jay?
We talked, we talked with Brad.
Okay. So yeah, so we, they negotiated and we have settled the contract on that. We've got us the $3.53 scale. So that's what we settled on. How long is the contract, do you know? We haven't seen a formal contract yet, but yeah, so we joined with the school about that. We're hoping to have the new first newsletter up on the website by October 1st. If I can close my door tomorrow and get on my computer and get stuff done, turn the phone off and close the blinds and, and get something written. I, I will, we, we're excited to get that up. We're hoping that that's a, a, you know, absolute way to communicate to the public. And also the manager's minutes that I'm reading off here are going to be now posted on the website, on, on the website with a link to the manager's report after our council meetings. So the public will have the newsletter monthly, but they'll also have this every two weeks. So they can go in, right to the manager's page, click on this and they'll see this. So in complete transparency, everything with the exception of, you know, a few phone calls during the week of something going on. Everything you know here, the public can easily gain access to, plus whatever we give on the newsletter. So, you know, we're trying to get as much information out there as we can. And Madam Chair and councilors. Oh. Yeah, I understand. So the election day is November 8th. My recommendation, and after reading the chatter. It says that, the chatter states that. The town will meet, the town council will meet seven days after election day to seat the new councilor. So I recommend moving the meeting from November 8th to November 15th to seat the new councilors and not having a meeting on election night. I'd need a motion and we'll do that.
Okay. I agree with that. I was going to bring that up. I think we can go ahead and take care of that point of business. Right now. Right. I'll offer up a motion to postpone our typical November 8th, 2022 meeting to November 15th. At 6:30 PM to be held here at the police station. Due to the election.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes by zero. We're off the hook for November 8th.
Madam Chair, this is pleasure. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Tim, I'd like to just circle back one second to the fire department. Just so everybody online here understands the bang for the buck we get with our fire department. It's a major structured fire in Berwick. Not only did we get there well before Berwick. Chief Hamill took control of the situation and when their chief showed up, they left him in control of the situation. That's huge. That's huge. And the time they beat that, that other department there was incredible. We have some fantastic people. So I just want everybody to understand how lucky we are to have the fire department we have.
And I'm not criticizing, but the numbers were actually 23 for South Berwick and six numbers from Berwick. And also the same, I got the same compliment. From the fire chief in Rawlingsford on the fatal accident over here. He said that, you know, that was probably the worst fatal accident that Rawlingsford had ever seen. And it was very tragic and they were very, when South Berwick showed up, South Berwick jumped off the truck and went right to work. And, you know, immediately assisted Rawlingsford in getting the scene under control and greatly helping them. And he had nothing but praise for, for the South Berwick Fire Department. So, you know, all the way around, and I want to give a shout out to, I got the compliment from the citizen on Barber doing customer service above beyond at her countertop. Her counter.
I don't know where those are coming from.
Yeah, I know, by the way. Why is around the office on a broom trying to scare the customers?
No, no, no. It's the 21st century. I use it back.
I also got, as you saw the email I sent you on Dawn, she went above beyond helping someone with a client to get in the apartment and loose and. And again, kudos to the, you know, police department. So just, you know, it's good when we get. Good compliments on the staff, which mostly all we hear.
Yeah, it's, it's been, it's been great, Lynn.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great update.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I do not get who made the second for moving the election, the meeting date.
Oh yeah. I have no idea. Maybe you were helping somebody.
All right. So for those in the room, we kind of jumbled around the agenda a little bit to make sure we had. Is everyone from the Great Works Regional Land Trust here now? Okay. So we just covered the town manager's, manager's report. We're going to jump back up to reports and presentations from the Great Works Regional Land Trust. I didn't get your name yet, but you could introduce yourself and anyone else who's going to be speaking. I know Pat's here. And I will go ahead and share my screen for it. Or tell me what you want to do.
From here, I can say, from here.
Yeah, yeah, you're good. Yep. The, the camera's here and I'll pick you up.
Okay. My name is Jill Prossby. I'm the stewardship director for Great Works Regional Land Trust. And there's some other folks, town members here that are here supporting this. Permission, we're seeking permission. So. We are asking the town for permission to start a recreation trail from the counting house. Park on Liberty Street. The main goal of this trail is for recreation and education. There's a significant amount of cultural and historic. Value or, you know, history to this section of the Salmon Falls River. So the idea is that the trail would start at the county house park, go through the sewer district, following south along the Salmon Falls River. It would go through the Liberty Street. Falling south along the Salmon Falls River. It would go through the Liberty Street subdivision and then on to Great Works Regional Land Trust property. And currently the trail would end at. The confluence of the Great Works River and the Salmon Falls River. It's a collaborative effort. It's been brought about by some members that had. Some town members that had started working on the bridge replacement. So just with that quick introduction, first of all, I want to make sure everybody knows who Great Works Land Trust is. I would assume everyone knows. And then also I know that I believe that the bridge project had been presented. Through the years. This trail is not a part of that at this time. This is just the trail section from the counting house to, to where the bridge could be. So. Ken, if you wanna go to the next slide, I can start to give a little more context. So here's the. The town, the county house park. This is looking from Pleasant Street in. Can't see the county houses behind all the people there on the zoom screen and then the power plant.
As I'm saying, on my screen, I don't have that. That's so weird.
So this is the. The, the education side of at the county house park right now and the, and the very sort of top. Section of the river where, would be where that landing trail is. Thought I might have had a pointer, but anyway. I got other maps that show. It's between the county house and Lee's Mill Pond. Yeah. So they're north from that arrow going up to the county houses. Right, right about there. Yep, that section right there. Okay, along the Salmon Falls. So this is the other view of the county house park, the parking lot that's there and obviously the Salmon Falls River. So this is the survey for the county house park. Recreation area, the green star is where we'd like to start this trail. There's a hundred foot wide CMP easement. This star is just outside of that easement. Closer to Liberty Street because if we wanted to come along the river section, we, we'd be in the CMP. Easement section. And if you can see on the very southern end of the boundary line, there's a. There's an actual, there's a drainage. Yep, that's it. The drainage right there. So most likely we'll have to build some sort of bridge across that drainage and I prefer. It's on town property as opposed to trying to get it to CMP. So that's why we're starting it up there as opposed to down on the, on the river section. It's been thought out where the best place to start this trail. If you go to the next.
We, we have county house park. As, as a town property. And we also had the, the Great Works canoe trail. That was part of development of that park. And, and back in the day, there were. Forming structures in the river. Floats and access points like that. And that canoe trail. Went from, you go back to, well, I guess you can see in the purple. Right where it says. I don't know what's highlighted in the river.
So the, the river's not highlighted. This is just another.
Well, that's Liberty Street.
Yeah. So the pink is the parking, current parking area for the.
But, but we. We, with respect to CMP. Does not the town already have permission to access? That, that parking lot and, and the use of that. Right now?
Yes, but to build a structure within their easements.
Oh, what structure?
A bridge over that pulver. That's, well, that's why we're here.
That's, that's town right away.
I can show you to the sidewalk ends. Just prior to that. So it'd be walking on the sidewalk, then walking in the street and back to the sewer district. So if we could. If we could, that would be best case scenario would be just to go straight across. Continue to show you. That's okay. That, that's one of the reasons why we, we might need a bridge section over this. It's a broker, a drainage.
It drains all of downtown.
Right.
Actually, right now it drains the pond that's out behind Burrow Academy. Goes underneath the ball fields and then crosses Union Street, then tangs a left. Well, not in that building anymore, but right by town hall.
Right. So this would cross over that drainage, the proposed idea, so that people wouldn't have to walk out on the street. I have a couple more photos that show. So that yellow is the, the trail, the proposed trail, the star, the green star is where it would start. Yellow is the proposed trail. The next slide. Shows how it would end up on the sewer district. Land. So that star is the same, you know, same location as the one on the previous. And then. If we get permission from the town to start the trail at the counting house, then we're gonna be. Hiring, hopefully hiring a town, I mean, a trail, a professional trail designer. To assess from there to the confluence and the best route and how it can work. We've had discussions with the sewer district. They're open to having a trail through their land, but they wanna see a professional trail before they make the decision. So until I know where I can start the trail or where we can start the trail. We can't move forward with that trail plan. For the next, if you're in the next slide. So again, if. Just past the entrance. If you look straight, yep, right there. Who's ready? To just a little bit to the right. Right about there is where we're thinking about starting the trail. Go through the next slide. Like I mentioned, this is a little bit closer up and. Yep. And then sort of right straight where the grass stops. I mean, the, the tall grass. Yeah, like right in through there. And next slide. Like I said, currently the sidewalk ends before it hit the south, the South River Sewer District. So that's why we're hoping to go through there. So that people wouldn't have to on the sidewalk, walk into the street and then back. Back onto a trail. So next slide.
So wait, sorry, sorry. On this one. So this, I would decide, I'm sorry, I'm right here. This is sewer district. So you're talking about like jogging this, like over here?
No, no. It'd be, we'd be starting on the grassy area of the, of the park, the trail. That's what we're hoping is to, to. Stay on the grassy part of the park.
Got. So the side, the sidewalk would just kind of stay.
So you wanna go to the right of the orange marker in the tree?
To the left of it. Yep, right in through there.
And it would start way back at the beginning of the scratch.
Right.
Okay, right, okay.
But that way, that's what I'm saying. If, if we can't cut it, if the town would prefer that we didn't cut across that. Drainage. And we have to use the sidewalk. Problem is the sidewalk ends.
So. And I might be jumping in that head here so that. Like if we. Hopefully people can see more of my mouth. So like this is kind of like what we're talking about, this little stretch here. This is the chunk of town on property that you all are needing.
That as well as, or we could start the trail right at the woodland edge.
Okay.
But it would have to go across that section of the drainage. A little bit of that wooden area too.
I'd rather have the trail go through there than out on the road.
That's, that's the hope. That's, that's, that's what we're asking information for. Okay, so next slide. So this is now looking in the opposite direction. You can see where the sidewalk ends.
Yep.
And you can see that little opening to the, yep, right about there. So that's the idea that the trail would come through there. There is riprap there for that drainage would need to be worked out, you know, exactly where it would come out. And then the next slide. So this is again, this is not a good picture, but there's, right, there's the orange flag. So it would be going through there. So this is now again, like we're toward the. Sewer district, the next slide. So this is where we come out on the sewer district side. Okay. And then the next slide shows how then it would continue down the boundary line. Back towards the river. So, so now you're on sewer district land.
Yeah. Where would it go?
So that you'd be coming out, yep, right down that.
Right down the middle?
Yeah, somewhere. Yeah. This is now, this is on the south. Sewer district. So it would be again, working out with them, you know, I think their preference would be that it would be along the boundary line, which is pretty much the tree line that you see. And then next slide. So this is now looking back up towards Liberty Street. So this is the grassy area that we, on the. Sewer district side that we would be able to utilize.
So the trail would be here somewhere?
Yeah, okay. And then the next slide. So this is, this is looking on the counting house towards the sewer district. You can kind of see the sewer, the red trees. The very light. The idea is that the trail would then follow along the water, that dependent on the trail plan. Next slide. So on the counting house park right now, there is this paved pathway. That does run through the park. Which could possibly be extended to that other section. It, it ends right now. If you go to the next slide. So this is where that paved area comes down to where the boat, that's where the boat launches. And then it continues there to the left, which comes out right. Go to the next side, right near the glass holder has the foundation for that. So that where those benches are, that's the last house, the glass found, the foundation. And so, you know, possibly continuing the paved path. From that over to the left. You can sort of see right over there on the left where we're proposing the trail entrance. We're right about there. Yep. And I think that's the last slide.
Your heart set on a paved path?
Nope, not at all.
Fantastic.
Just that, you know, it could be all connected or, you know. Whatnot. So. That's our ask is if, if, if the town's even open to that possibility. If the town's open to that possibility, then we'll investigate an actual professional trail plan, which then we would bring back to the town for. You know, permission or. Whatever, how that would work.
There, there is a potential fly in the ointment here. And the, the proposed trail falls within the resource protection zone. Which is two hundred and fifty feet within the upper water level limits of the river. Through that section and. It would need to be an assessment at some point as to whether or not the proposed work. Complies with what's allowed in resource protection. So that's, that's something that's a hurdle. And I think perhaps the better venue to, to do that would be with the planning board. To go through that review process to see.
So for this section on the county house, we could need to go through the planning board?
No, I'm just talking about the. Because it's, I, I think we should re, personally, I don't speak for the entire council that we should review it comprehensively. And we, you know, rather than doing it incrementally. That we just make sure that we're all ducks in a row, that we're not. Proving something that doesn't lead to anything.
Right.
I think, I think the idea of, of, of connecting. An existing town park with a longstanding parkscape that the, that the. Land trust already owns, which is basically at the end of Vine Street as it sits right now. Makes a lot of sense. It kind of anchors both ends a bit. But like I said, it's, I, I can't speak to whether or not this proposed work would be permissible. Depending on, I think it probably comes down to levels of disturbance and whether or not it complies with what can happen within resource protection.
Right. And that's the idea of hiring a professional trail planner that can start this assessment, figure out what the regulations are. What permitting we might need to go through. And we do have funds already in place for that. That were transferred from the bridge project to Silver Central to Great Works. And I have more information about that. If you'd like more information about that. But that's the idea is we just wanna know, I'm, I, you know, Great Works is sort of the lead on us. We're also talking with the other landowners. You know, the sewer district as well as the Liberty Street subdivision landowners. There's eight landowners that. They have a common interest in a pedestrian easement that runs through their land. So we're just in the initial stages of investigating this. And like I said, our first. Thing is finding out where we can actually start this trail. So if the town is. Opposed to even starting on the counting house property, then that's gonna drive further development.
I'm sure. I was actually thinking about. Great Works property that abuts directly onto Lee's Mills Pond, but I was forgetting about. The architectural dig site. Chad, thank you.
Yeah.
The Chadborn site, which is another anchor store.
That's where this is most likely gonna, you know, end at Chadborn site.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's why this trail is, there's, you know, a lot of cultural and historic history. And that's part of the, the intent of this trail is to also have education signs that. You know, speak to not only the Native American history, but also the colonial history and the town's history. And really. It's, it's a pretty significant area. I think a lot of people may be aware of that already and how wonderful it is also as a wildlife corridor. The Chadborn site is, does have a conservation easement on it that protects it and has specific requirements for wildlife habitat. Particularly bird habitat. So it's just a really neat opportunity to pull it, kind of pull it all together.
So if I can summarize what you're looking for from us today, you're sort of just looking for like appetite of like, is this something we would be. Open to allowing on this chunk of town property and then. And then you guys would sort of pursue your more solidified plan and bring that back.
Yeah, we're asking the town for permission to start the trail at the counting house park.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Another question, but a comment for the void. Certainly, I think, you know, any, anytime the town can support conservation like this and, and. Certainly trail, trail stop. I think that's a positive for the, for the citizens in the community. For the Great Work Land Trust, you're dealing with, you're within the shoreline zone. Talking about putting a bridge across, which is a permanent structure. So I would recommend, and it's also stormwater drainage right there. So the stormwater area that encompasses that. So all that lives, I believe, with code and planning and planning boards. So I would recommend that. My recommendation would be before you go too far in spending any money. Is run this up that pipe hole and see if there's any, as Jack said. D E P permits or town, other town requirements for stormwater, shoreline zoning and so forth, just to be safe. I don't know enough to give you that answer. I would talk to the co enforcement and the town planner. And they could probably give you a better definitive yes or no.
I, I have another comment. And it goes back to counting house park and that was a citizen initiative and. There was fundraising went on, I believe it was fifteen thousand dollars that was raised. For the dogs and the creation of the park and. And all that. And it was, you know, grassroots program. It really, really did well. And then it was transferred. To the town. And but what was never part of the planet. Was any sort of a sinking. For the care and feeding of those dogs. So what happened after a number of years, just like anything else. It, they, they, they got. To a point where they were dangerous. And there was nothing, there was not, no maintenance plan associated with that. So. That's another key piece, particularly when we're dealing with a, a structure. Going over, that's an important point discharge for, for what we have. So. Again, who's gonna own that? Who's gonna maintain it? What sinking fund is gonna be created to, to not only maintain a, a, a proposed new bridge, but also. The, the trail itself.
And that is a big piece of. And I also was in, in land thing for a long time and management has always been a big piece of, you know, my planning. So. Great Works is the lead on this project. But like I said, there's other landowners that the project would cross. We, we created a small committee, just a little committee. For the current landowners. And that was one of the, the main things that I brought up too, is, is the future management of this trail. And how that's gonna happen. And, you know. and how that's going to happen. And, you know, um, it's definitely a part of the discussion, um, for this project.
There's another, again, just brainstorming here, but there's possibly another opportunity to ease the requested land, in other words, to grant an easement to an entity like the land trust to, I think I'm thinking back to the model of, uh, the trailhead for ours falls, this easements that had fallen in that.
So.
To access the granted land that the town gave to the land trust. And then there were easements to, I guess, both ways for the property.
The town and Great Works already have a precedent for that at the South Berwick Town Forest.
There you go.
The town, the town granted an access easement to Great Works to access our property, which is, um, just passed.
The roche.
The roche. Yeah. So I can supply copies of that, access easement, it was a deed, a deeded access easement that we already have.
For, for the benefit of those on the board who weren't here, that was a really, really successful, uh, partnership that was, that was crafted. Uh, you know, going through the, uh, the town forest and to get to that hundred thirty four acres.
The short of it right now is you're looking for us to tell you we're all for it. And then you're going to continue going through all the rest of the hurdles you have to go through because you've done this before. I'm good.
There are other people here that are supporting this trail, so I just didn't know if, if anybody had anything they'd love to add. I just wanted to make sure everybody had an opportunity.
Perhaps the better question is whether or not the town council tonight, um, is in favor of, uh, moving ahead with the planning. And that would give an indication rather than looking at it as a wholesale, okay, yeah, we're, we're all in both feet. So I think it's, it's, uh, approaching, you know, coming up with some sort of a, a planning phase. And then starting that whole process through the, uh, the rest of the, and, you know, I'm sure that maybe the conservation commission would weigh in as well.
Yeah, I mean, that would, that was just to, to ask the town council, or the town for permission to investigate that, that the possibility really where. That's where we're at in this, this phase of, of this trail.
Yeah.
Well, and I just for my, sorry, John.
No, it's okay.
Just the landowners, there's four landowners right there, there's you guys. Then there's the town, the sewer district, and then the Liberty Street.
Something to know. So there's actually eight owners that own a common area.
Okay.
Um, they each own an eighth of it. So, and of that common area, there's a fifty foot wide pedestrian easement that runs through that mutually owned common area. So technically eight owners.
How is it going with those owners?
So far, so good. We have two of them represented here, um, tonight. And, uh, Great Works, I did send out a letter to all of those landowners informing them that we were, you know, considering this. And if they had any comments or questions, um, and I hadn't heard back from anyone other than the folks that are here that are in support and have joined our little committee, um, that we started. Um, we also have, um, Scott and Nina, um, they're also on the committee as well. And they were really involved with the bridge project. So they have a lot of the cultural and historic, um, significance that's involved with this project. So three group of people that started to put together.
No, I think that's great. I, I think it was, the pictures were great and the, the maps.
Yeah.
Looking was, was very helpful.
In full size, if anything, it wants to be more easy to see. I do the full size surveys that can point out. One thing I would like to say, the, the map, because I think you guys have all the information that I said. And the, 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 the map that has the highlight of the trail, it goes from South Berwick Town. Just so you know, that was based on, like the very first one, that drawing was based, um, if you can go back. It might be the. So, you know, if you, if you really look closely at this, this is based on tax parcels. The town does not have the correct tax parcel up there. Um, there's a piece of the South Berwick Sewer District acquired. The town shows that the town owns that. It's actually which the sewer district owns, which I also have the documentation for that. So this drawing makes it seem like the trail goes over a much more significant area of town land, which it really doesn't. It's only about a hundred feet. So I just wanted to, um, kind of clarify that. If anybody, yeah.
So you're talking about like right up here?
Yeah, exactly.
This map is making this look bigger.
Right. And that, that section is actually is owned by the sewer district.
Okay. And, and you, you have updated maps with.
Yes. Yep. I have all the documentation for that.
Okay.
I need to bring that so that assessor. That's, that's another conversation.
Question? Um, did we add the Liberty Street intersection to our kind of traffic study area? I'm just concerned about being good neighbors and increased traffic flow. And I know that neighborhood is kind of sensitive to. Is Liberty part of our scope? Yeah. Cause I think, right, you, somebody brought this up a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, we, we asked Adam.
Yeah.
Last time we discussed.
Yeah.
And I think it was when Brett brought up the sidewalk crossings down there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other discussions, anybody? I.
Madam Chair, I move we allow the Great Works Land Trust permission to start investigating proposed trail. Or building of the proposed trail. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I think this is a good idea.
As long as it's not paved, I love it.
And pedestrians, it'll be just a pedestrian trail.
Um, thank you for the pictures and stuff that really, I'm, I'm really bad with maps. The pictures were very helpful for me to see it, to make it real. Um, all right, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good presentation.
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna stop.
What's that? That whole area right there into the river is often very flooded.
Yeah. There's a lot of uses to this, but we just wanted to start somewhere. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. All right. Um, that covers reports and presentations. Um, we did have a few extra people join after I'd asked for public comments. So I'm going to ask again, is there anyone here this evening that wants to speak about anything that we're not talking about later?
Um, Pat Robinson, Rattle Street and, um, kind of with my, well, all my hats on. Um, I'm just wondering when we do the downtown visioning, I'm wondering how far away from downtown, I'm wondering if we can go all the way to Liberty Street to the bridge. And maybe we can get it, because of all this, we can get a bridge built. And then this landing trail could go over the bridge, down onwards and perhaps down to the San Falls River project. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, so be from the, um, shoe town area.
For what project?
For the, for your, for your downtown, downtown visioning project. You know, really, yeah. And I was just wondering if that's where you're thinking and if you're not, I would.
We haven't formalized that. I mean, we haven't got that far ahead. It's still.
Yeah.
Kind of thirty, thirty thousand feet low, but certainly we'll entertain that when the time comes, I'll reach back out to you and, and get, you know, some definite ideas of what you're thinking.
Yeah.
And I, I don't see why it couldn't be able to do that.
I, I also like to, um, perhaps consider sometime in the future, a trail across down Soul Road, one river back and all the way up to Liberty's sometime. You know, I, it might be a tough one because I saw it from the river on kayak. But, you know, I mean, it, it was talk about that when Soul Street was being extended and it just kind of went flat and push it away.
Well, let's dream big. Let's do a boardwalk all the way through that.
I mean, you all bet. Thank you. Yeah. Go ahead.
Melissa Costello, Boyd's Corner. I know there is an upcoming workshop on the traffic study. Um, I just had a couple of questions, so I didn't have to, um, bring it up at that meeting. Um, first, I was just wondering how much, um, this traffic study is costing us? Um, also if it's a performance based, um, rate, does it, they don't figure anything out for us? Is it just money wasted? Um, and that was, that was probably, I think that was my question. So how much is the traffic study costing us and was it on a performance based scale?
Can you answer that one?
Forty-four thousand dollars.
It's, it's not a performance based, the, the bit of the scope of the project was for them to do the update what was currently there, provide us with, um, potential solutions based on their findings of what they had now. So the project isn't, is not performance based because we don't know what that would be. So what it was, the scope of the project was to evaluate the traffic falls, traffic patterns, walking patterns, safety aspect of downtown sidewalk and potentially provide us, being traffic engineers, with potential solutions. So performance based, no, but, but in the project scope, there's the purpose of project is solutions to provide the town with as many possible solutions based on their findings of what possibly we could do next. So just give you a little background if I may. We've been studying this since nineteen eighty-seven. There's been all these reports done and all these recommendations. And for whatever reason, not to blame, not to thank, very little's ever gotten accomplished. So a lot of opportunity, the windows are closed. So the purpose of this is there's somebody a lot smarter than me that understands traffic, well, that's traffic for engineers. That's why we, we found this report, dusted it off. It came from two thousand and ten. The full traffic study engineers were probably would have cost us a hundred and fifty thousand today to do that. But we found this one luckily, um, that had been there already, that had been done two thousand and ten. And within that report, it already had four or five phase in recommendations that was never, nothing was done with. So our goal was to take that base that we already had and spending, sort of spending a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars, run that backup poll, send companies, say, can you just refresh this with current updated information? And then based on, with that updated information, provide us real time solutions that may work now that we could stop funding. So not really performance based, but there is a, there is a resolve for the purpose of the bid. So that we have something to go by when they give back to us.
Um, on the website where we post our agendas for June fourteenth of this year, there's a supporting docs that's that traffic study. So we essentially have asked, it's really comprehensive and has some great recommendations, but the data is old. So we've asked them to update that based on today. So that will give you some of what we're hoping to get.
If we've done something two thousand and ten, it probably will help today.
Yeah.
I just looked up the contract. There was forty-four thousand nine hundred.
And, you know, the, the original, when I done, I've talked, you know, I talked to three or four of them, now the traffic studies. And a full blown traffic study was anywhere from, uh, one town paid a hundred and twenty-six thousand to a hundred and eighty-five thousand, depending what they were looking for. And I was hoping not to go there and we're very luckily, we're cleaning out a little lots and found this on a hard drive on a, on a, uh, CD floppy disk, didn't know what it was, plugged it in, turned it on, realized what it was and said, oh my God, we captured this. And so just jumped off that and saved the town caps of money, so to speak, by just not reinventing the whole wheel. So that's kind of, hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you.
May I go to Sensen?
Could you state your name and your.
Yes, please. So, uh, when this last came to a town council on that previous two thousand and ten, I believe, I think you find it was voted down because of businesses that didn't want to lose park. Say well so much of that.
Any other public comment? All right. Um, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Number one, Paul Street Municipal Parking Lot. Uh, so this was, I'm sorry. Um, so I think at a two, two meetings ago, um, I think Karen joined us. Um, I'm just going to provide a little bit of context for those here. Um, so, um, Karen owns a building, um, or property, I'll call it, and has some tenants that, um, have been using a town owned, um, parking lot to park overnight based on kind of a handshake agreement um, with our prior town manager. And now, um, enforcing that parking, um, has kind of come into play. And it's something that we brought, was brought to us, um, a couple of weeks ago. Is there any other new information that? Does anything that you want to add?
Um, I have been calling around asking for help in creating a rental agreement for at least three parking spots. And I have been unsuccessful up to this point. Um, I'll continue doing my due diligence, but, um, it is right now, uh, with the way my conversations are going, it will become a hardship. So I'm back here asking again, maybe open the door to have further conversations of, um, renting three parking spots from eight o'clock at night till six o'clock in the morning, um, with that two hour leeway. Maybe at eight, you know, they have the two hour parking, um, after that six AM time period. Um, I don't know the exact figures of what the town puts into that parking lot. So it would, I would feel naive coming to you with a figure right now. But, um, I'd be willing to obviously pay for those three parking spots.
Anyone have any thoughts or anything on this?
Well, just as, you know, not, not tilted one way or the other. The easiest thing agreement we have in the library parking lot, the best of housing is, I believe it's two hundred dollars per space per year.
And what the, what are like the terms, I guess, of the?
Well, I'm just in terms of.
In terms of dollar amount.
Dollar amount.
Yeah.
And, and I believe there are twenty-seven spaces, twenty-eight spaces.
But like from an hour sampling?
No, it's a reserve park.
Oh, all the time.
That was part of the Avesta home deal.
Yeah, we, we sold five eights of an acre of B one land to invest the housing. Part of that was a combination to, uh, to use part of the existing parking lot. And, and also the project made improvements to the parking lot. And those funds are dedicated to the parking lot as a special enterprise fund or whatever, special revenue fund.
Yes, that money gets set aside to fix up the.
So whatever we need, whenever we need to, it's a sinking fund. And so whatever we need to repay it or re-strike it or do anything, we need to do to it, it would come out of that, that revenue source.
I would much rather invest in the town than go privately and try to, you know, run from somebody else.
Uh, I, I feel like, uh, and when we, this first came, I was just kind of being black and white with my thinking. Uh, and as far as like, it's a public lot, that's where it stands. Um, but, um, not sure how we would move forward as far as creating a, an agreement, even though it was on a trial basis, um, or six months or a year, see if we can work out, uh, our rental plan of sorts on a trial basis to figure out if it's something that the town, it would get the, her tenants through the winter at least. And then, and be able to give us some good data as to if this is something that would be, as the town would be willing to continue. Not sure.
So where, I just want to play the other side of that. So where does it end? We did invest up in the parking lot that would be built back there in a large parking lot for, right? It's a small parking lot, very central to our downtown businesses. If we start doing traffic downtown, moving things, again, that's going to affect those spots. If, if we lease them, we're doing whatever.
If, if we lease them, or do whatever it is, what's going to stop everybody from Academy Street coming to the town council and saying, I want a parking spot too? Because nobody on Academy Street, most of them do not have off-street parking, right? We've heard that every year we have snow. A lot of places downtown do not have off-street parking. So where does it stop? Where, where do we draw the line and say, no, we allowed it here, but we don't? We have to be very careful, in my opinion, and I'm not trying to put a hardship on you, and I understand it, but we have to be very careful in allowing spots that then anybody that doesn't have off, on-street power, or off-street parking can come to the town and say, I want one too. That's a pretty good deal for Avesta, I, I'd like that for a parking spot, but it's twenty-seven parking spots, so it does add up.
I'm a little adverse to entering into anything long-term, just because we're looking at our traffic options downtown, and those are super prime spots. So I, I kind of am in agreement with Jeff for just the winter to get people through, just the winter, or a set amount of time. But long-term, I don't think it's something that is feasible for the town.
I'm just thinking, as far as, I hear you, I hear what you're saying, that's where I was thinking before, and then, but I'm, my thinking is, can it be, can we put parameters on it? Like, the eight to six, six to eight, whatever hours you can, you know, where it's nighttime hours. You see what I mean?
I, I do, and then the other side is, you're now going to cost me, you, and everybody else in this room more money, because now the town's got to go back numerous times to blow a parking lot, this is empty. So we have to look at that too, right? I mean, into the parking lot, blowing in the parking lot, they got to go back multiple times to get it clean. Because again, we still own the parking lot, so even if she rents a spot, we still own the parking lot, we're still liable. If it's not taken care of, we're still liable if somebody gets hurt in it. And that's on every taxpayer in town. It's just, again, I'm just playing the devil's advocate, other side of this, that there's a lot of concerns with doing this, yeah.
Good. So I guess I would have to do my homework in how other towns rent their parking spots that were landlords. I can tell you right now, currently, my tenants are young professionals, so they are utilizing the downtown area, and they love living in South Berwick. Also, if I cannot find this a solution, and again, I guess I was misled, and I should have gotten it in writing, so my bad. What am I trying to say? You know, I'm, I'm going to have a hard time, or my pool of tenants or applicants for the spot will be limited. In general, the value of my building could go down because there is no parking. So it's just, I'm also looking proactively, you know? So not really, it's creating more probably a problem than people can conceptualize. So those are just some of my thoughts. I'm not looking to getting anything for free. Getting license plate numbers and leases in, in possession will also help with maybe understanding who's parking there, because I understand there's been people leaving cars and abandoning cars, and just problems in general, so you have some control over that. I would certainly help this snow removal issue, I'm, I'm willing to help. It's not something where I would just sign on the dotted line and disappear, so. I just need to find a solution.
I'll weigh in, I'm reluctant to move ahead on this without hearing from other butters. Because just off the top of my head, we have Mobile Station. We have people who are on, looking from the parking lot from Paul Street. We have that brown building with the center, various people in there, it's another business use right there, that's on Paul Street. Then we have the tavern, and then we have, I do tattoo shop?
That's mine.
That's the line, that's?
That's mine, that's my property, the tattoo shop. That's my building.
Okay, so then there's the other property on the corner, and then we have Fabulous Fine going around the corner of Paul Street, right? And then we have the, I don't know how many people would use that from hotel and restaurant as well, for their convenience. So, that said, I'm just reluctant to move ahead without hearing from others who would be likely users, or have their customers be likely users, and perhaps we, we notify those butters of potential pending action by the council, and then we hear from them prior to taking the action.
What's the current status right now, though? Where, it's, it's, it's parking from stipulated out to stipulated out?
Right, it's in an ordinance, it's in an ordinance.
Yeah.
I have an ordinance.
During our last meetings, we, we talked about, I think the tenants were getting ticketed, and then we stopped.
I asked, I asked, well, because there's a verbal, we're going to allege a verbal agreement. I asked the police department to hold off until she got to the council to resolve this, to?
By, by hold off, what did we?
Stop ticketing or?
Stop ticketing them. Taking an enforcement action because I cannot verify a verbal agreement between previous management and her, even though there's an ordinance in place, it wasn't fair to the citizen at the time, I feel sad to them. So I just temporarily asked the police department to just hold off until we get it to council, and you being the municipal official making a decision of some kind.
Does that mean, Madam Chair, I know I don't generally speak, but one thing you may want to take into consideration, as much as I hate calling attorneys, the town went to a special town meeting to purchase that property for a specific use. Does the council have the right to override that? Just a question.
Thank you.
Back in ninety-seven?
Because right in the warrant article, it says specifically, buy it for this purpose.
And then, do you recall the purpose?
Yeah.
For a parking lot, for municipal parking?
It was in, if you go back to the first time she came to us, it's in the supporting documents, the actual, the, the purchase of, I think it was eighty or ninety thousand dollars for the property, and the actual warrant was in the supporting documents, and that, that, thank you for bringing that up, Barbara, that was, that was there specifically for downtown parking.
I, Madam Chair, I can answer Barbara's question. The board, the council cannot, cannot change what, I mean, what legislative body has decided. Without going back to what legislative body, I can tell you that.
The council is the legislative body, yeah.
What's that?
The council is the legislative body.
It is, but if they, if the tax base, if they decided it by, by town vote, and it has to follow that same process, it'll change.
My, I haven't said anything, I totally appreciate the inconvenience of what we're talking about, but I have the same concerns about setting a precedent elsewhere in town, and especially given the kind of rationale behind why we purchased the property and what it was in place for. I, I, I'm reluctant to move forward with anything on this either. So I think, is there any other discussion on this, or can we make a motion? Anything else?
Oh, well, given the requested action, leave the ordinance in place and be enforced, or set a public hearing day to possibly change the ordinance for the Paul Street Municipal Parking Lot, I would move to leave the ordinance in place and be enforced.
Yeah.
Second.
We motion the second, any other discussion? What are you trying to find?
I'm just, while we're doing this, I'm just trying to find the supporting documents.
Was it the last meeting, it was the meeting before?
The twenty documents for today, or two weeks ago, or two meetings ago, it was like, there. I just want to, I think it's worth, we have, we have a motion in a second. Worth addressing the ordinance. So I'll just, I'll just read this, just for, for reference with public, what Barbara had mentioned. On November tenth, nineteen ninety-seven, there was a special town meeting held. It looks like for the sole purpose to see if the town will vote to appropriate undesignated general funds in the amount of eighty thousand dollars, no more than eighty thousand dollars, to purchase tax map twenty-eight lot one forty-three, which is the Paul Street lot that we're referring to, for a municipal parking lot. Just so, for the record. All right, any other discussion on this?
Just in this, also in that document, that areas of major concern to those present were the need for the lot, and whether the entire town would benefit from it, cost of its maintenance, and possible effects on traffic flow and state safety.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in?
Does upholding that close the door to, because a municipal parking lot is a parking lot owned by the city that is generally available or used by public, by the public for the utility of parking? Just the definition on Google.
And they can park there, they just can't park overnight. It's a designated two-hour or four-hour parking spot.
Well, I think it's two-hour.
May I ask specifically why the overnight is off limits? Because if they're not, if they're not using it or taking spaces up during the day, during prime business hours, I guess I'm just confused as to why renting spots isn't a positive, because you would have more control over who's actually using that lot instead of people going there and just parking their cars for a month at a time, and you not knowing who gets there. So I'm just kind of doing the pros and cons. On that?
That's sort of where my question was at, was just leaving the ordinance as it is, which has the, the hours of the, of the parking lot. And there's a vote of yes on the motion, to leave the ordinance as like that. It doesn't close the door to the council potentially creating another ordinance to a rental option.
No.
That's what my question, I didn't know about, because we're closing the door for any future ideas for?
We're completely open to, if I may, we're completely open to other ideas. It's just that we're kind of in a state of ambivalence right now. I believe staff is looking for some direction on this, and the butter is looking for some direction. And based on the information we have in front of us right now, it's, it's my opinion that we're better off to say, okay, we have the ordinance in place, we'll continue that until we get other information. Or, or? Yeah, 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 it clarifies our position on September twenty-seventh.
One last comment, and then we're going to go.
So what would be my next step, then, if there, it might be?
Madam Chair, the question's inappropriate right now, we have motion on the table, we should act on the motion.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and I just can't give direction. That's what an individual may choose to do or not do.
All right, all those in favor of a motion on the table, say aye. Aye, any opposed? You said I, okay, sorry. Most press five-zero. I'm going to lean perhaps on, like, Jack and Jeff with your planning board experience, I mean, this is an ordinance, like, just to continue what you're talking about, of like, potential, I mean, I sort of take what our decision this evening adds, I mean, the other option was to possibly change the ordinance, which to me, I view as no different as creating a new one. You know, unless we're going to create one super specific just for that location. So, I feel like, I don't know, but my take is that any further action would just need, we'd need a lot more information from the butters, and it's, it's, as I said.
And it's, it's a, it's a regular procedure. Ordinances can be changed on a recommendation by the planning board, or a recommendation by the council, or a referendum. And that's, that's how ordinances are created and changed or amended in our town. And so, we would have to follow that process, it's not a an option for us to take that sort of action at this meeting tonight, because we have another ordinance.
Yeah.
And, and so, basically, the question isn't right for, for a council decision. So that's why I chose to leave the ordinance the way it is, but also to clarify the situation, notwithstanding other agreements that might have been made in the past, likely were made in the past, but at least your butter has clear direction, and the manager has clear direction as to where we, what we choose to do. That is to uphold the ordinance, and then, you know, it also fixes the problem of people leaving parks there and all the rest of it. I mean, we have other, other situations that we noted. For example, I believe it was last winter or the winter before, there was, you know, we designated four parking spaces in the library lot for school drop-off. And there was a car park there through the winter, and there was piled with snow, and it was just obviously just sitting there. And it, it took a, I think, town staff took the initiative to locate the owner, and maybe this, maybe this PD, however that happened, that, I don't think it came to the fact of having to tow it away, but it was rectified so the spaces were available for their intended purpose, which is school drop-off. And when there's only four spaces, we hate to lose probably thirty or forty percent because of the snow that built up, because you can't, you know, you're going to lose adjacent spaces as well, so this is kind of the same situation, but we have clear direction going ahead for both the PD and Public Works, and, and the folks who may choose to park.
All right, any other discussion on this?
Do I have any discussion on that?
You can ask, right?
Mary Cardo's about my show, just some food for thought. How to house a hill, park a lot, there's supposed to be no overnight parking, yet some are parked open. So, why is that?
Police haven't noticed it yet?
Yeah.
In all honesty, they haven't noticed it yet. They're probably, if you listen to the manager's report, they're out doing traffic stops, which is awesome, but they probably haven't noticed it, or nobody's complaining about it.
The nature of park for them?
Yes, they do.
And why are they allowed?
Good question, I think it's something we should have a police front look into.
They've turned that parking lot into, John Boyd's Corner Road. I've driven by, and they've turned a parking lot into a playground for the kids, and parked multiple vehicles in there.
All right, I mean, I think we'll go ahead and move on to number two, town office project discussion. We had a workshop last week to kind of kick off this, the very early stages of talking about our plans going forward for the town office. Tim, what did you, I, I had a couple of things I wanted to bring up on this, but I wanted to give you a chance first, if there's anything.
So, moving forward with, you know, the task of what I talked about when you worked, when I was hired, we asked you to stop moving that project forward, started looking into it, and got to a point where I wanted the input from the council. So based on everything I've learned from this point back, over the last nine months, there hasn't been anything formally done, there's nothing formalized. I have a real estate appraisal study that was done, that's all we have. There's been no formal analysis of the building, there's no formal direction on whether we want to renovate, go forward, what problems there are, we know there are problems, we know there's space issues. We know the windows are not weather tight, we know that we spent a lot of money on additional heating, the handling systems probably not adequate. The handling systems probably not adequate. After meeting the alumni, I went and met with P. Gagnon's sons to find out about heating systems and the boilers. So I got some more facts on that. Those boilers were installed nineteen ninety-six by P. Gagnon's son. It was supposed to be a major renovation of the boilers and the heating system. Dick Brown, manager at the time, stopped halfway through the project and just installed the new boilers, that's all that was done. The remaining heating system that was supposed to be done, which was the plumbing and the piping, make it an adequate, efficient system, was never finished, so it was half-done. The two burners that are in there now, that they're, because of their age. It's hard to get pods for, and the next two to three years will not be able to get pods for, on a catastrophic failure, we'll need replacements. The good news and the bad news, the news is. The burners, the last time P. Gagnon was in to do any kind of maintenance was in two thousand sixteen, because in two thousand sixteen. The then administration went and canceled the maintenance contracts, so P. Gagnon hasn't been in since. In the prior times, they had talked to the staff and had recommended that they put. Uh, low, low temperature alarms in the building so that if the boilers for some reason did go out and trip on a line that they would call. Center for Dispatch, they could notify the police department and also, um, what they call, you know, boiler, boiler monitor. Alarms where they would just have, there were idiot lights that they would install in the hallway so that. Maintenance people could see, the two boilers, there's two boilers. Boilers work in tandem, one runs in the winter, second one runs in the summertime for the water and is a supplemental boiler to boost the. Additional temperature in the winter on cold, really cold days, so they kind of work in tandem. Hopefully if one went out, the second one would kick in, take over and it'd run awfully hard, but it would be enough to keep the building going. The failure with that is you want to know that that one boiler is down, we don't have any way to know that. So that P. Gagnon's recommended those changes, and so I told them, please come over, close to the boilers, make sure you get serviced. You get maintained through the winter and we'll talk about a low-level alarm, they know what they're putting in a low, low temperature alarm. As well as the indicating working lights, make sure that we know both boilers are up and running. So, that fixes that problem by just a little bit of time. Reality is in the next two to three to four years, if we suffer catastrophic failure of a boiler, we won't be able to get pods, it's gonna have to be replaced. They didn't have any idea what the cost would be for that, he said the problem you have. They have the old radiators all throughout the building, so those little boilers down there were designed to push through baseboard heating, not those big old radiator. And he said, so the circulator's running extra high, things are running extra high, just, that's the system we have today, that's where we're at with that. So now that we have that information, I'm providing that with you. I have nothing more than a real estate appraisal, we know that there are a lot of things that probably don't. It hasn't, hasn't been maintained correctly over the years, whatever reason. And we're at, so it's the, it's now back to your decision as the council to give me guidance as to where do we go next. Do we want to do a feasibility study of that building to determine, A, what's wrong with it, B, is it worth renovating, reusing again? Do we wanna maintain, keep some space there? You know, including where would we go if the building was renovated, or do you want to look at an off-site? And it's just. This is now, it's, it's in your hands where you're the, the legislative body in, in the council, uh, give me some guidance as to. Where do we go next so we don't spend time and money enough at wasting on a project that isn't gonna work for the community?
One thing I would like to throw out there and for this is trying to capitalize on the fact that we have, um, an election coming up. And using it as an opportunity to get some sort of straw poll from people, um, to get a sense of, just, uh, like. Bear with me, like, this is not exactly how we frame it, but just get a sense for people, like, their opinion, like, we should. Keep it where it is to get a location sort of opinion on it, um, just as like an additional piece of information for us to use as we go forward. Um, I think it could be a very straightforward, like, single, uh, single, you know, this or this kind of question, um, that we could frame up for people. At town hall on election day at the exit, just to see, get, have another data point, uh, to ha- kind of help guide us with everybody think.
I think you're gonna get an emotional response like Jeff spoke of at the last meeting. I think without having the true fact, I tell you, yeah, keep the town hall where it is, I love it. But if you tell me it's gonna cost four million dollars to renovate the town hall, or I can build a new one for two point five. I'm gonna go build a new one for two point five, because it's gonna be cheaper, better. It just, I, we need that piece, I think if you, I, I, I'd like the study we did before, I think it would be great, but I think you're gonna get a lot of people that. It's downtown, it's where it should be, let's keep it, but I don't think that's an option when they're starting to look at, we're gonna spend four million dollars.
Yeah, that, this is sort of like a precursor to that, it's just, like, I'm sort of throwing it out there as more of a, like, just kind of gut reaction, like, stay where it is, move to another location. Just to get a sense of where people are at, I think it's something that we could do for little to no cost, I mean, I'd be happy to. Like, for the marijuana survey, I'm having deja vu, but like, camp out there and just ask people to fill out a quick survey, I think we could even do it on a computer and keep track of it electronically. Just to gather some information.
So since I'm going the other side all night tonight, I'll just go there again.
Let us finish, please.
We're, I couldn't make that decision if you asked me that when I walked up, because I don't, again, I don't, I don't know. We can't get a feasibility study done between now. No, 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 I, I understand, but it's a straw poll, so then when we get those numbers, say we get the numbers and. You have a thousand people that want the town hall where it is and you get five hundred that don't. And then we do the feasibility study and we find out it's four point five million dollars to retrofit this. Do we go against the people that said they want the town hall where it is? Because then we're gonna have a lot of explaining to do of why we went against public opinion.
Well, the same is also true if we keep the town hall where it is, because it makes financial sense, but everyone wants it to be. In a different location, like, it's, it's the same thing, it's just a piece of information that I'm seeing as like. Something we would gather that we would have, because the reality is, like. We have to make a fact-based decision, we have to make the hard decision. And we have to consider money and we also do need to consider public opinion, and I'd like to know what the public opinion is.
I think that, um, I'm on, I'm on board with your approach, I think prior to having any type of polling, there needs to be like massive educational outreach. Because I don't know how many people logged into our workshop, but it wasn't overwhelming. And, you know, if, if the newsletters, the monthly newsletter is coming out in October, if you could kind of capture or summarize your presentation about. The status of the building as we know it, you know, not prior to doing a feasibility study, but just go, having some public outreach. Prior to kind of taking temperatures.
And Chair, of clear answer, the ultimate decision is up to you, the counselors. The people on the street will not get all the information that you will get, so ultimately, it's your decision.
Thank you. Um, is anyone strongly against gathering this piece of information as. Something to use, go forward.
So, what, is this something you thought about before or just something that's.
No, I thought about it before.
Okay, so, what exactly was the question?
I'm thinking something like, something along the lines of, do you want to keep town hall where it is? Or should, do you want to build a new town hall? Or, or move the location, I want to get a sense from people on the location piece.
And, and you have to add that. You have to add that piece, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm gonna say keep it where it is.
What, what was that?
Regardless of cost.
Oh.
That, that, that is, uh, and so you have a hundred percent support for me if you add that. Hundred percent support for me if you add in, you want to keep it where it is. Regardless of cost or move it to a new location, I'll stand right behind it, I'll help. Because that's the piece that we really need to play into along with Jeff saying emotions, because motions play in big until it goes into your pocket. Sometimes.
Does that help?
Does.
What do you think?
I'm, I'm not opposed to that, um, but it, it, it's still, you know, the question is still in my mind is that we need. In order to make a decision and then to sell that decision to, to the taxpayers, the residents. We're moving in this direction because. This is where we are, and, and like I said at the workshop and at the conference meeting last night, is that. There's a factor with any capital piece that if you get not the total value. But if you're at the point where the cost of renovation or repair is fifty percent of the cost of new. You really have to think strongly about replacement, because when you put that money in, to bump it up to fifty percent. The, the curves that I'm used to seeing is that you never get the same longevity as if you build new. And, and so there's, there's a, so you're not gonna get a fifty-year deal by renovation. There's gonna be other capitals gonna happen with increments of ten, fifteen, twenty years, whatever that might be along the way. And, uh, so it's, it's really not kind of apples to apples, but, um, what I would. What I, what I came away from the workshop with was to say, okay, if we have. An indication, like we put Mike Vassal or some other professional, or just to come up with, you know, estimators, come up. As soon as we hit that fifty percent number, what we're estimating new would cost, I say we stop. We don't keep going to get that ultimate, because we're at that point and, and say, okay, that would be, I think, the tipping point for a decision, in my mind. That said, it's not gonna be my decision, because that's not gonna happen, because I'm gonna be going. And, uh, but that's just the guidance that I could. I could give to many.
Yeah, but just a quick question, do, I don't remember, do we know how much the building assessment will be-ish? An assessment would be.
Well, Mike Vassal said thirty, but it depends what you ask for in that study. I mean, thirty is what Mike thought someone, an engineer would come in just to tell you the condition of the building. But I think in a feasibility study you're talking about, you also gotta ask, what is, what is the feasibility for using this building versus going offsite building a new building? Is there, is that, I think you gotta ask that question, that'd be information you would need to make a balanced decision you're looking for.
That plays into energy costs and everything else, right, no matter what you do to that building, it's not gonna be as efficient as a new build.
And one of the things you'd have to consider in there, again, is moving staff offsite for a year while you renovate that building, because as Mike Vassal said. You know, that is hugely, it can be done, but that is extremely cost prohibitive, it's, it's really labor-intensive to wrap a building up so that. Your employee staff stay safe and are protected while there's construction going on, dust, debris, especially there's asbestos removal in that building and so. I don't, you know.
What were you gonna add?
So I just wanted to tell you that since the workshop, I've started reaching out to other communities. That have already undertaken this project, see what processes they've used that have worked, what hasn't worked. So I'm getting a really good feeling from some different towns, and here's what I'm finding out. Things like what we're talking about right now, location and whether or not to use an old building or new building, that came from councils and select boards. After that, what they did is councils and select boards then formed a building committee. That involved usually, they had set rules and regulations of bylaws. Who could be on a committee of citizens that had like architect, had expertise that would add to the building committee. And set up bylaws and rules and regulations, a chair, a vice chair, with a scope of purpose to actually build this, a, a new building, or design a new building. That, that they would eventually bring back to the council for final approval, went to the citizens. So the citizens would have input in, in the makeup of that, and then count the, um, employee staff was like liaisons to that building committee kind of thing. But as far as what I can, what I'm, and I'm just hitting the serbs now, I got Denise working on this, I've been working on this. And the two or three towns, it was the legislative body of the council of, of select that decided, we're not using this whole building. And kind of the feeling, gutting that I got from two or three managers I talked to was Jack's figure, what Jack used. When we collect the fifty percent more cost factors of renovating, keep the building, we click, you know, we said nah, it's better to just go. So I'm trying to get that data research done. Just to give you some more guidance.
And Chair. Just that, we do have a building committee, we haven't used them in a number of years now, because it just, there hasn't been that opportunity. But that would be perhaps a place to start. Because, you know, they. They're appointed officials, I believe. Tom, Dave, and Brad, and Mark Agnes, I think that was the fourth one. Well, I think they're, they're seated, but we just, they've, they've been lying foul.
Um, so, so Tim, sorry, I don't, so are you like still getting more information?
I, I am, but I, I kinda, you know, so at thi- at this point, that, that's just kind of background information for you to know. But I think I need, we need some kind of direction, either to do something or do nothing. What do you want to do next, do you want to embark on a feasibility study, do you want to get a poll, then get that poll and come back and have that discussion, what's next? I, I just need some direction, so I don't, I don't want to waste time and money and effort and staff working on projects if we're not going anywhere with it.
I'd rather not lose three months waiting on the poll, because poll would be good info, but I, again, and you know me for spending money that I don't like to spend, but. I think, I don't think we can go forward without a feasibility study, without knowing. I mean, we all know what the building needs, right, I can tell you, these windows, the elevator's not good, and the roof leaks, I can tell you that.
The handling, electrical.
Right, we, we can keep making a list, but we need someone professionally to come in and, and tell us what it is, and again, if we get to the fifty point, fifty percent mark. Of what we think it will cost, but then at least we have, we'll have the poll, and we'll have real numbers to go forward in the first of the year. I, I just, I, I think that's, I think we need to do the feasibility study.
Then the other piece would be to authorize the expenditure or account that would come out of.
Yeah, because we don't have any money.
Capital, we have money in the cap.
And we have money.
We have, how much?
To go toward a town hall, town hall project.
Any municipal facility, okay, yeah, okay.
The only thing I hate seeing about the town hall we have now is the town hall. I agree with Tim very much that, uh, a new complex would be so much more, you know, like, less expensive to taxpayers. But to blend on going to the schools, for meetings and stuff like that, I remember when we went to the schools, meetings was not good. And, uh, there's not too many old, old times left us out there.
We discussed the, the fact for a meeting room, there, there needs to be a large enough room in the new town hall. To, to do voting, to do.
See a hundred people.
On the first floor.
Not that people would go, would be nice, but they don't go.
Um, so I, I guess I would like to, and I'm, I'll happily volunteer to kind of go forward with this straw poll idea, I don't know, Tim, if you think that. We need to get like Phil's input on like the language.
Not for a straw poll.
Okay, um.
I thi- I think I would recommend it to be a unanimous council decision for the question, so that we don't, you know. I, I would like to have you guys vote on the.
The language, yeah.
Language, what it's gonna be, but it doesn't, if it's just a straw poll, it doesn't need to be a legal question, because it has no legal bearings on anything. It's just an information piece to you.
So given that, um. Let's plan to for our next meeting, which is October eleven. Which is. Oh, no, 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 October, so our next meeting is October eleven, and then we have another one on the twenty-fifth, I'm just looking at the calendar.
We have a public hearing on the eighteenth.
Yeah, for the. So we, we could, um, agree on language at our meeting on October twenty-fifth. In preparation for the election next week, the, the following meet, the only reason I say that is because October eleventh, um, both John and I both will not be at that meeting. So they'll just be the three of you guys holding everything down. Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right, thank you, um, so we'll plan to on ten twenty-five. Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right, thank you, so we'll plan to on ten twenty five to finalize. The straw poll language and I can put together a draft and give that out to everybody ahead of time.
November first cannabis at six thirty.
Um, yeah, that's another topic that I have to.
So we want to make a motion to get Tim set up. For feasibility study and put a price cap on it or.
But I think uh, I think that's appropriate myself, that we would. Authorize the town manager to 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 at least uh, frame a feasibility study.
If I may, could I ask you to for the board just to give you permission to, how about if I draft an RFP for what it would look like first?
Yes, I'm getting it.
And then and then based on that RFP, my recommendation is. Put the RFP out for quotes to see what we get back and then I could do that, but I get the RFP done first. Then I would let you review the RFP. And then once we agree that that's acceptable, we'll send that out for quotes. I would ask you for permission to release that RFP and move that vote, if that that was what I'd recommend to the council to move forward.
Adam Chair, I moved that we allow the town manager to draft an RFP for the town hall feasibility study.
Your motion in a second, any other discussion?
I think I just wanted to say, I think that it's a good thing to do because in order to move anywhere, whether we stay or go. We have to know where we are and what we have.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
And and you know, just as another comment. It it does necessarily have to be in the RFP, but you can, you know, work it in so that there is a built in circuit breaker. So that we if we reach a certain level based on what that number might be. You know, of the, you know, the repair renovation cost. Yeah, yeah, we just at that point, we proved at least the staff that it's probably not worthwhile going further. But again, that's. Use your words.
All right, um, that wraps up, anything anything else you need from us, Tim, on the town office stuff?
Nope, thank you.
We have to say thank you for your patience. Been a long time.
New business number one, any reaction on applicant to the conservation committee, um, we have. Jane, thank you for your patience, I, this is, so just to be fully transparent, this process of having you join us at our council meeting is a little new. And so this was a learning for me to maybe like bump you up higher. Yeah, hopefully this was a riveting. So we have Jane here who's applied for the conservation committee, um, thank you very much for being willing to volunteer, I think. Pat, are you the chair? Yeah, do I'm sure that you have probably learned from Pat, what how, when do you guys meet, all of that stuff? Okay, great. Yeah, we just really appreciate your willingness to serve and looks like you've got great background for it and have been part of meetings and stuff before. Anyone have anything that I'm missing?
I want to ask my standard question. So I'm a big proponent of of the land trust, right? I love, I I use them, my wife and I hike them, we go everybody, we try to do a lot. Uh, yes, yeah, we are actually paying members, um, my big question I ask everybody is. When we when we donate land, when we do stuff with land, I want it open for everybody for. All aspects of use of the land, which includes hunting and fishing. It's a big thing for me. Um, so as long as we continue down that path, which we always have, it's fantastic, I would just, I always ask what your view is on that.
Um, well, my husband hunts. And fishes, he did, he does it for food for us mostly. And he's from Texas, so you know, he's kind of part of. But no, I mean, I I, you know, I I have a master's degree in parks recreation and tourism management. So I understand user conflict very well, it's something that I studied a lot. Um, and it's, these are very emotional things, you know, there's a lot of hikers who don't like hunters and. You know, it's 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 a tough emotional subject, but I think that the biggest thing to take away from it is just. All of these things throughout environmental stewardship, so if you hunt, you love the outdoors, if you hike, you love the outdoors. If you're a birder, you love the outdoors and so the end game is the same and that's what conservation is all about. So I think finding room and, you know, embracing all of these things and, you know, in ways that the the best ways we can. For, you know, dealing with user conflict is important, but yeah.
Yeah, me and Texas, my son went to A and M.
And we have one property we we manage, which is the town. That said, we may have to deal with user conflict, yeah.
And and we have that, we we went through that with the trash clean dump and they wanted to close it from dusk till dawn and that. Didn't work with the hunting that's done there, so we didn't do that, so, yeah, I.
It's like false the hunting rules. Can be. A little bit beyond. Yeah, yeah, I don't, so I don't know those rules, but.
It's all good, I got I got a perfect answer, I'm great.
I know, I know.
Jane, which, how do you pronounce your last name?
It's Frecky.
One thing that we would always ask applicants for. You you can attend the meetings in your, you you fully intend to complete your term. And what is the term we are considering right now?
Expiring in June twenty twenty five.
So it's it's a three year. I would just say, thank you very much for your application and the willingness to serve.
Adam Chair, I move, we appoint Jane Recky to the town itself for conservation committee. And her appointed term would expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Your motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All right, um, moving on to setting a public hearing date for an annual general assistance ordinance update.
And Chair, we set a public hearing date of October eleventh, twenty twenty two. For the public, for the general assistance updates. Six thirty, second.
Your motion in a second, any discussion? Just I just want to provide a little bit of context here for everybody, so the state publishes updated appendices. Um, for um, GA housing maximums every year, it's a housekeeping item and we're required by law to adopt these ordinances. Thus the public hearing to. To get moving with that. All right, um, we have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Um, new business number three, training for counselors and planning board members. I know, Tim, this is a suggestion of yours.
I just wanted to get formalized, um, I don't need a motion, but just to guess out of the heads of. Are you in favor of me drafting a policy that the council would pass? It will require new planning board members in the councils to take MMA training within a certain standard of time, which is usually. Six months and or based upon availability by MMA at a set time as well as for the manager to provide. New council training and and uh, orientation for both the planning board and the council, I think. You know, in other places, this has been a common practice and I think it's not fair to to have someone elected or appointed to a board or commission. Just like it's not fair to have an employee without any ever ever any training standards or guidelines, and I think we open ourselves up to liability, so. With permission from the board, I'd just like to draft a policy that it'd be just a policy that you approve. That we put in place that would require that, you know, people would do, the MMA trainings you take online as well, we go in a group. Some of our planning board members took it, so it was very good, but we should make sure that all new members and people get it as well as councils get the MMA train. I'll draft the policy and present it to you.
Adam Chair. Um, I would just make a suggestion that we expand it to also to zoning board of appeals members as well. Given the quasi judicial nature of those hearings, it's formal and uh, a certain. Progression of thought that needs to happen, so. Matter of fact, the the manual from MMA office for planning board in was. So I thought that would just suggest that we expanded to that.
And I will include that in the policy and I'll draft the policy.
Thank you.
It I I might have missed it, you're also including town policy along with the MMA, right?
Yeah, it would be, it would encompass all. Would encompass both all the town requirements, you know, so the council, uh, the council's. Stuff from the chatter, the planning board stuff from their chatter. Um, and then the MMA training for council, the MMA training for planning board at ZBA. So that we don't end up, so so one senses that we've had, problems we've had. Is because very quite simply, members didn't realize that they were ruled or regulations or standards that needed to be followed. So let's fix that before we end up spending more legal costs than we have already spent. It's a simple fix and I just need a policy from you folks to mandate that so that I can enforce.
Um, all right, last item, just the brush slash Salmon Falls River, I don't, we don't have any.
I don't have any.
Crystal Brook and the Salmon Falls River came up as a. Help me refresh my memory, what did we call that? We we were crafting out. The overlay area of B one. For medical marijuana storefronts, we formed a subcommittee. Jeff Jeff and I have sat on the committee, uh, Jean Damaric Kopples co-chairing along with Paul Steinhour. And we investigated what was going on and what we call quote unquote lower Main Street.
Well, Main Street's at the Landon.
Yeah, uh, so. Main Street from Route two thirty six Berwick Road to the bridge crossing into. The village of Salmon Falls out of Rawlins, off the state line. And so we investigated that, we also found out that. One of the proposed properties for a medical marijuana storefront was the site of the former. Rio's barber shop, which abuts Criscal Brook. And then further investigation, we we found that there was some. Uh, perhaps improvements that could be made to the zoning ordinance with respect to. Where those properties exist as a former business center of town. You know, the railroads were busy, that was busy down there and the business section slowly moved up the hill. There's still business down there, but it was, you know, much, much busier back in the day, a hundred years ago. Uh, so there were some gaps that we found that needed some some working, when I forwarded information to the manager. Uh, basically. Some meeting notes that that we had taken and uh, and so there's. The potential, and and actually we talked about that as including our things to do for. Council consideration and and uh, and an investigation into that area. Jeff, you can expand that if if. If 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 you can think of anything else.
No, I I don't have anything to add, I think that there was just some work that needs to be done in that area as far as ordinances, talking to each other.
And and what in recognition of the people putting in the time to serve on a subcommittee. Unfortunately, this got set aside, we didn't even bring it up to Tim when he was hired as far as what pending matters we have on on. On the back burner, so to speak, so this didn't back it back burner and so we just were bringing it up to uh. So that it's on. A list of that needs to be prioritized.
Did you send me those notes?
I did. Actually, essentially a copy of them last time.
So to just just summarize like what you're saying, Jack, it sounds like. Taking a look and I guess I would suggest that perhaps maybe you have our planner take a look at this. Um, and and sort of look at that area of town and the existing. Bodies of water and the ordinances that we have in place because of those of what.
As well as resource protection and also be on and and so there's this this and, but just because we bring it up. That doesn't bring it to the top of the list. You know, I think sometimes that happens and we'll drop everything you're doing, that's that's not the intent, it's just that it's so it stays on the list. And so that when there's available staff time to to look at it, it it gets bumped up to the A list.
Would you, Adam Chair, I made a council correction, would you be willing to meet? You have common knowledge in it, could you be willing to meet with Tammy, the planner, kind of bring her up to speed with what you know that or you to Jeff or. And kind of have a meeting with her, I think that would probably be. May, if if you have that knowledge, I think it'd be easier to bring somebody from the outside up to speed quicker. By having a personal meeting with her, so maybe down the road somewhere. Sure, I mean, it would make sense to schedule so that she can sit down and get all particular from you and then have that to kick off from. I think that'd be easy.
And in deference to the the people who serve in the subcommittee, I I think it'd be logical to reach out to the co-chairs.
You have those names for me?
Yeah, Paul Steinhour and Jean Damaric Kopples. Uh, and so. They would, they would be, uh, I think probably. Obviously, I'd be, no, it's not obvious, but I wouldn't be willing to to sit down, but I think it would be just a courtesy to include that. It's because of the work they did.
Whoever, but have a, maybe have a reassemble of that for a minute and have the planner sit in so she can get to speed that. I think that'd be the the best fastest way to get to accomplish that goal, but we'll put it on the.
Or at least prioritize it on someone's list, we only got a two days a week. You know, so there's there's obviously a lot of. But as long as it stays there, then it's.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, so no council action on this, just um, the staff and staff would coordinate with the previous members of the committee and all of that to learn more.
Just comment on lower Main Street. Nobody's restaurant came aboard and all of a sudden they called it lower Main Street. Where I live is called the Point or what you want to call Hog Point. Needless that I find out Hog Point was a racial slang for the French and Irish that lived at the point. So it's numbers, uh, in fact, my homestead was four seventy two Main Street. Down in the Landon, they start with one and two and three and four, so it's law, it's higher in elevation. And down there is lower elevation.
All right, any other.
Which one?
Any other discussion on just go book Salmon Falls? Okay, council member comments.
I've said more than enough tonight.
Okay, um, something came up at the con plan meeting last night, there was. Counselor Minahan brought it up and 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 I offered a guess at at what's going on. Uh, but we have a new gas facility down on Dow Highway Route two thirty six across from the high school. And uh, so the question came up about when a facility like that comes online. Uh, and the volatile nature of the product that's going through it, I don't even know what they're going to be doing at that. Whether it's a metering station or whatever it is, but what is the step and that we don't need the answer tonight, uh, but just that. In my work with Unitil or or gas companies in general, they're usually very proactive in terms of outreach to. Potential first responders in case there's an incident at that facility and usually they they're very good about outreach for that. So the question is, is uh, is what is the level of first responder and safety coordination with our public safety? People, staff. Uh, if if we know that, that's funny, but I don't want to put you on the spot to answer that, but but generally speaking, there there has to be some. If if we know that, that's fine. I don't want to put you on the spot to answer that, but but generally speaking, there there has to be some. Well, like we John mentioned, in incident command and control. And, you know, the incident commander took care of that and there's always a pecking order about who's the most qualified to take control of a a site. When there's something going on.
So Jenny is on tracking this. She pulled it off the. She found the dusted copy of the actual plan submitted to the planning board. It was or to to the town, I guess. I guess they just submitted it. Actually, it started with Burner trying to figure out an assessment of it. So this is a pumping transfer station. So where they're. What they're doing is they're they're putting in. Three or four, I think it's four pumps, transfer pumps to build pressure in the system so they can push gas farther and further. And their document that they sent us, it's that thick. There is a plan, pile of plan is when it's complete, that they have to provide training for public safety, which would include. Not only outside, but mutually to patents around and respond to a major event there. So that isn't the plan as far as they submitted to the town. I I don't, I don't know that. I don't think it went through the planning board because it's a federal government project. I think it was just something we got because we did have it. We got it in. John St. Dale's office. So we did find it. It is there. Jenny's gone through it, read it. God bless her soul. I don't know what she sleeps. She didn't do it. So she's on top of that. She's been out there doing several visits. And so, yeah, we we're on top of that.
Yeah, the the conversation last night was not, that was an example, but you know, you know, how do we routinely? You know, do that kind of outreach so that we're not caught unprepared for for something else that may develop in town or.
Right, barring barring that particular project because it's a federal. So we had very noble side. They just told us they're gonna do it. Well, no, the world, that's how it works. Because other other projects in town go before the the planning board, right? And so with a planner, you you know, you have your site plan review for the project prior to. And then you have your site plan follow-up after. Well, that's part of also the the town planners project. So in residential product or. As a residential municipal projects, we have the caveat of that is the site plan follow-up after. You know, how the projects being built, code enforcement goes in, does their inspections. Then when projects complete, needs a C O. Should they get a occupancy then, or the town gets the acceptance of the project, however that is. But there's follow-ups in the system. So there are there are checks and balances there that exist, both on the municipal side and the federal side. It was just a. Jenny did look into it. There is a thing and when they're all done, they have to do a walk through a training for.
And and the the second thing in my comments, I I know the website's under review. But is there any way we can eighty six Town Hall Strange from the masthead? I mean, it's like the third item on on our masthead on the website and it should go away.
On the left-hand side, like I have it out there. We talked about this a while ago. Town Hall Streams, they should go to our YouTube page. It's like we're this, we're not using this anymore.
Okay, well, we'll try to work on that tomorrow. We were talking about that today. We don't have any ability to change that that. At left bar, well, we will contact you guys and and see, you know, again, it's. We're within the last stages of getting this fixed and that'll be going away. The new website will be popping up. You know, I'm hope we're very hopeful the new website will be much more friendly, much more user adapter.
It just it it's as as Mallory thinks and I think it's a false lead. Absolutely. Particularly, it's got a prominent location. That's all I have. Thank you.
Con play last night, we are well over a thousand servings. So we are starting work on a community workshop evening. In the next couple of months, please don't get that confused with the traffic informational session. It's kind of separate from that. Looking forward to it.
Um the only couple of things I had is just a reminder for everybody that we are having the, and I'm saying this worse, probably more so for myself. Because I won't be at our meeting on the eleventh, but we have the traffic public public meeting with Sebago Technics on October eighteenth. At six thirty in Town Hall on the third floor, correct? So that's just a reminder for everybody on that. And then at our last meeting, we had discussed having a cannabis workshop. On our, sorry, November first. And I'm going to be annoying and ask that we reschedule that for November twenty ninth, I think, is probably what makes the most sense. I'm just going to be out of town and I think I missed our last cannabis workshop. So I would just like to reschedule that for the twenty ninth. And I think that that will work for the planning board.
Madam Chair, I think it's only right and respectful that we ask Mr. Karakas to continue to serve and come back on. Or this is just to follow it through all the way to the end.
Well, Jackie Boy is going to be a private sus.
Do you all, do you have any concerns with that, Jack? You guys? Okay, alright, I'll loop back with Tammy and the planning board and staff to reschedule that and you're welcome.
But I still got a phone to pick about the eleven.
We'll go there. Before I make my normal motion, I can my nickel back for a second? If you. If you hit a snag on the eleventh, one if Jessica or Jeff or you can't be here. Someone reach out to me. I should possibly be able to zoom in from the North Main Woods. But I should be able to.
Do on the twelve. That's one thing.
Okay, just let me know because I can I can figure out how to do it. We have wifi at the camp, but it's sketchy, but. If we need it, so we can have the meeting, just let me know.
And the same, I'm gonna I'm gonna be in London. So like emergency situation, I could join from there. Like I'll have good wifi. It'll just be. That's an option.
That's the other part is I might not be present.
Alright, all those in favor say aye. We have a quick board yet.
I did not look at my agenda.
Actually, I did. I didn't get a vote. I was just hoping everybody would get.
Okay.
And I have a clean one to people to sign. I just made notes so that it was easier or hopefully easier to call. And then this is a summary of everything. I know, I like to be colorful.
Oh, you're colorful.
I know you like my colors, John.
I can't wait to get you a bente with one cream and one sugar.
No sugar.
You're gonna get sugar.
It's eight thirty three P M and we'll go ahead and bring our board of assessors meeting to start. If you all could continue our conversation outside, that'd be great. What it, sorry, Jen, I'm not um.
So what we have to approve tonight is the supplemental billing. It's the rebilling to the correct party. Last session, we approved the abatement. Oh, this is just. This is just the rebelling of the abatement to the correct party. We just needed signatures on that as well.
Got it. Okay. So um. An appropriate motion would be, um as a result of the abatement that we granted at our last meeting on the thirteenth. We need to rebel account eighty nine map zero one two lot zero zero three dash A. Michael and Joyce LaBelle at one sixty five Bagamanticus Road in the amount of seven thousand one hundred twenty eight dollars and ninety six cents. Any discussion? Alright. All those in favor say aye.
That is just a summary of the fiscal year's abatements and supplementals.
Got it. Okay, but there's no other action for us. Okay. Alright, we're good then. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. We are all done.